Questions or comments? And I have forgotten, is there a mo- do we have a motion to approve this? I thought we do. Correct, Clerk?
I'm looking.
Our consensus says we do have a- we have a motion to approve. Is there any other- any other discussion on the motion to approve this project budget for the levies? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the project budget is approved. We go to item six B, resolution on a fire rescue truck.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, setting forth the city of Topeka's intention to acquire one rescue truck apparatus pursuant to KSA 12-110C.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item, the acquisition of a fire truck apparatus. I'm going to have Chief Bailey come up and talk, but I do want to answer some questions that reflect questions that have been asked in the past in terms of how we fund projects. When this project first came forward, I think we had a 15-year amortization on the debt service. We took a look at the life cycle, the life cycle of such a vehicle, and we made a determination to come back with 10 years. So, I just want you to know that certainly not patting ourselves on the back, I think good financial management is a requirement that is incumbent upon all of us, but when we bring this item forward, we did take a look at the best way to fund it, and I know that our objective is to manage our, take our fiduciary responsibilities very seriously. So, all of that to introduce Chief Bailey.
Thank you, City Manager Colson. Mayor Wilkens, councilmembers, good evening. And I would be remiss if I didn't just go back to the previous presentation, just to hear Councilman Campos, you made a comment about the marker over at the, I believe, the station, Great Overland Station. I don't know if you know, but fire station number one, just at the north end of the Kansas Avenue Bridge, if you ever have opportunity to travel past there and you look right up in the upper north end of the apparatus bay doors, and there is a marker there that shows the water level as well. And so, I've actually seen the pictures that showed the floodwaters up there, and it's kind of still breathtaking all these years later. But, anyway, just a little bit of trivia for you. I'm before you tonight because our request is for approval of a 2014 capital improvement program project, more specifically is Truck Company 11. The project would be funded by a GEO or general obligation bonds. As City Manager Colson said, it's for a 10-year period to the tune of about, just a little over $770,000. This particular truck company, our truck companies are designed to be replaced, I mean, our project, our replacement plan calls for our truck companies to be replaced over 12 years. The fleet services, our city's fleet services actually developed a plan for our frontline apparatus replacement, taking in consideration the best way to lower repair costs, reduce downtime, advances in technology, carrying EPA emission standards, et cetera. This vehicle, Truck 11, is a 2000 model year apparatus. It was actually put in service in February of 2001, and over the actual lifespan of this apparatus, we spent over $135,000 in repairs on it. And since 2009 alone, we've spent over $60,000. So, it's kind of consistent with right, what's expected. It's time to be replaced, and our request is respectful for your approval of this replacement project.
Okay, thank you. And this is Station 11, which is in, on lower, the one on Lower Silver Lake Road.
Lower Silver Lake Road is where this truck is currently located, and this is the apparatus that we're going to be replacing, but that does not mean that this truck company will necessarily go to that station.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point to clarify. Questions, discussion for Mr. Bailey? Yes, Mrs. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy, or Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I was trying to think of the question I was going to ask. Chief, I went to a meeting last night that had to do with broadening, widening 37th Street from Burlingame to Gage, and one of the concerns was a person who lived over there that had heart, a husband with heart attacks, and wanting to have an access road. And I assured her that when we do detours in the city, that the fire department, because she was, you know, thanking the fact that they had a fire department close and it came and it saved her husband's life. I tried to assure her that yes, when we do have issues with roads and that type of thing, that the fire department does make every effort to make sure they know where the detours are and that type of thing. But the question was about the big trucks getting down these roads, and the fact that you have said that over half of the calls are medical in nature. So, I guess my question zones in on these apparatuses that we are replacing or looking into. Do we, can we find that we could replace it with a truck or a apparatus that wouldn't be as expensive to go to the ones that are 911 medical calls?
Your question is, can we replace our apparatus with smaller vehicles to run the first response calls?
Can we add smaller ones that, yeah, that could get down, especially when we have access problems because of detours?
Well, I heard a couple of things there, Council. And so, if I may, one, we've taken into consideration the sizes of our roads and the dimensions with all the specs on our apparatus. So, we're very confident and comfortable that we know where projects are being going, being worked on throughout the city, so we know detours, we know alternate routes. You referenced 37th Street, I don't know exactly where, but if it's peripheral to the city limits, we communicate with the area townships to do temporary mutual aid responses to ensure that we get that timely response that's needed. This other thing that I heard you ask is, can we look at smaller vehicles? We certainly have talked about the possibilities, and we're actually looking to see, is that a viable option for us to look at smaller vehicles? What would it take to actually realize it's not as simple as it may sound to actually do that? But if I had to give a one word answer, it would be, yes, it is possible to look at it, just don't know what the final outcome is going to be. We actually are exploring it literally right now. So, I don't know if it's going to work for our city, but it's worth looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Would you want to describe what this vehicle, fire rescue truck apparatus, does? I know, because you have different types of vehicles in the department.
Absolutely, Mayor Wilkens, that's a good question. This is a truck company or rescue apparatus. For most people, the very short version is, the difference between an engine company or a pumper and a truck company is probably the primary thing that people need to understand. An engine company or a pumper has a tank on it that carries water, and in Topeka typically it's a thousand gallons of water. A truck company or a rescue apparatus typically has the salvage and overhaul equipment, and it does not have that tank on it. What's unique to this particular apparatus, and one of the problems with it is, it also has the light and air capabilities. Lights being literally what you think of the lights that graze up, and we can pretty much take pride in lighting it up, similar to what you see at a football stadium at night. If we have an issue, we can light. But also, the air compressors on it allows us to refill our SCBA bottles, so when we're on scene for our firefighters to refill. We have, the lights on this particular apparatus have been broken for over a year. There's two light fixtures. They cost about $12,000 each to repair and $16,000 each to replace. And again, we're kind of at that point where it's probably not the most practical thing to do to try to repair or replace these lights.
Okay, other questions, discussion, Mrs. Ortiz?
Motion to approve a much-needed fire rescue truck apparatus.
Been moved and by Mrs. Ortiz and seconded by Mr. Campos to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Mrs. Hiller?
Just wanted to thank the chief and City Manager and our financial advisor. This, knocking this back to 10 years, I'd still like to see us get to the point where their cash, but knocking this back to 10 years, save the taxpayers $120,000 on this equipment, and I think that's great. Thank you.
Before your point, other discussion? If not, all those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question. How much wear and tear do our trucks receive going over railroad tracks? Because this app, or this station, along with four other stations, consistently go over railroad tracks to get to various parts of the city. Do they have a major impact on our apparatuses?
I don't know the answer to that question. I probably had to defer to the fleet for a little bit more expertise and something like that.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, just a quick question. I mean, in terms of suppression and rescue, I'm convinced that this is a necessary purchase. We want to be able to provide the equipment to our men and women in the police department to provide the emergency rescue services that they need. What my point is, by way of commentary, is this vehicle is, by the time we pay for it, it's going to be over, close to three quarters of a million dollars. My office is on 29th Street, and I drive by the Brookwood Shopping Center several times a day. At least once a week, I see one of our trucks in the Dillon's parking lot. That's an awfully expensive vehicle to be used to go to and from the grocery store. Is there any way we could keep this in the station and use a less expensive vehicle to go to and from the grocery store?
Well, the answer to that is yes. Obviously, what we try to do is work in the unique schedule of 24-hour shifts. We realize that whenever possible, and we encourage our firefighters, whenever possible, plan your day out, plan your day ahead. Sometimes they, we have, because of vacations, because of different leaves, a number of reasons, we have firefighters to transfer to different stations. We get called back, someone has to come in and work, maybe at short notice, they are coming back in to work. And so, if they have to go to the store, we ask them to try to coordinate that en route from, upon return from an alarm response. We ask them to not go out of the way whenever possible, because of exactly what you're saying. It is very pricey, and to just run the apparatus if you were just running an errand to the store or something. And we also are concerned, and I'm especially concerned as the fire chief, even about perceptions. You know, we have our firefighters to go to, in one area of town, there's the Gee's Custer Place, and in another part of town, there's the Dairy Queen. And especially during the summer, our firefighters will go out sometimes, because we try to encourage them to get out and know your neighbors. You know, that person that you're going to run that first responder on, you know, you don't, if you can know them, or they can have an idea of who you are, and then not be doing that emergency situation, you can have that interaction, take some badge stickers out with you, take some coloring material, something to make it an interactive and make you a part of, of that community. We want our firefighters to be a part of that community and engage in project makeover, takeover, or the ice cream social if at all possible, or sometimes when you're at the grocery store. You know, I can remember as an inspector, and I had my fire car out to the Westridge Mall on an inspection, and I parked in the fire lane, and I came out and there was a note, "You're not here on an emergency." So, I realize and I understand, people don't always think that the fire department should be out in places doing things that's not efficient, efficient use of resources, but I can assure you and each one of the council members that I'm fully aware and accept the responsibility of making sure that our firefighters are not out futilely using resources or misusing resources. We're not, that's not acceptable to us, and so, I appreciate your concern, and we're all over that.
All right, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Man speaker?
I actually have no problem with the men and women of the Topeka Fire Department being in our grocery stores. My experience, having gone to Gee's Custer with a fire company just down the street there one night, after we came upon a motorcycle accident that we were the first on the scene, the call hadn't even gone out on, once we dealt with that issue and got back, we're heading back to the station, the guys decided to stop at Gee's. We probably talked to 10 or 15 people. You know, the men and women who work for our fire department and our police department are heroes, whether we want to call them that or not, they are. And so, when the public interacts with them, they see them in that way. Not always with the police department, because it depends on your interaction, but with the fire department, they, you know, the kids look up to you guys, and I think that that's important, and I think it also provides that contact that you were talking about, that we need to be out in the community. I don't want somebody at the grocery store without a fire truck when the alarm goes off, because I want them to be able to get in that fire truck and get to that fire. And so, for this idea that somehow we're misappropriating resources, again, my experience with Gee's Custer was, we were coming back. I mean, we were heading back to the station. It's a stop, it's, you know, 10 minutes, but it's a lot of goodwill. I've heard concerns from other members, or other folks in the city, that people have an issue with folks at the grocery stores. I've never heard that. You know, I've heard lots of other issues that people point out, but I've never heard somebody say that our firefighters shouldn't be allowed to go buy groceries when they're on duty for 24 hours straight. I understand things change, and, you know, you may not have showed up prepared. I don't believe that that's probably the case with the firefighters. I imagine what happens is that you get in the fire truck and you're heading back from the call, and you say, "Hey, why don't we stop off at the grocery store, and we can pick up some burgers, and I'll cook for everybody tonight," or something like that. That's the reality I think they're dealing with, not this, "Well, let's make a grocery run, because we were on the company dime." That's not what's going on here. I don't necessarily believe that we need this piece of equipment, only because of my belief is that we don't push our pieces of equipment far enough. I know that there's numbers that you've thrown out that say it costs this much to maintain, but $750,000 rolled from one year to the next is a big savings for the city. So, to be able to make equipment stretch, I think, is important. I don't think driving the equipment to the grocery store is increasing its, or the miz. It's using it in the normal conduction of business on a daily basis. So, you know, I understand where folks are coming from, and everybody wants to point at public employees and think that they're trying to get something for nothing, but at the end of the day, from my perspective, they're doing a whole lot of work for us that's very, very important, and to stop at the grocery store and pick up, you know, some hamburgers for the guys you work with, or the men and women that you work with, I got no problem with that. Thank you.
Mrs. Ortiz?
Thank you. I've heard it all, being on the council for nine years, you know, and I use that scenario at the store. I've seen them run out of the store. I had a gentleman tell me, and they do pay for their groceries, by the way, the city doesn't provide that, they pay for their own groceries. I had somebody call me and say, you know, they're at the grocery store, they shouldn't be there, they should be bringing their lunch, and so, and they said, "Well, if they got to go, then let them take their own car," and that is true. If they took their car, they'd have to go back to the station and get the truck, and it's just time delay, which we're already short several stations, and I just can't see that. I can't continue to say this enough to you, Chief Bailey, and to the City Manager, education, education, education. We need to educate the public. I think I had this talk with Chief Bailey, and I'm not sure if I did with the City Manager. The reason why our constituents don't know exactly what the fire department does is because we're not educating them. And when a truck like this, an expensive truck comes before us, you know, I had a guy that, he didn't know how much it cost. He didn't know how much the equipment cost that put, this is part of their tools, that we have to educate them, and we just can't educate them enough. And trust and believe, once you do that, then they'll be willing to, because they'll understand the process of what's going on and how it's going on, and what these guys are going through. How do we educate them? Because it's a budgetary thing. It really is. The chief's cut some stuff out of his budget that, here this year, that they cut out of their budget that were, you know, I told him, I'd try to work with him to try to see how we can implement it back, because we have got to educate the people. It's just like the fire, the fire alarms, we've got to educate them at each and every aspect of it. And so, you know, our equipment's expensive, these guys, you know, when they're out on calls, and yes, most of the time, they're flying out of the station before the call can even go off, you know, because they hear it. Get with them, get with them, and show, and have them show you what exactly is going on, and get a better understanding. And last but not least, I'm going to say this, those guys take good care of those trucks. It's just the maintenance part of it, when you got the gas tank flying off. There's nothing, you know, when you got, when you got this happening, or you got black smoke and all that, those guys wash that truck, they take pride in it, and they take a very, they don't misuse it. I don't feel like that. But get to know that, but however we can educate them, that's what we need to do. We need to educate from the kids on up, and get a total better understanding. I will be supporting this, and I think I did make that motion to approve this.
Is there other discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have seven yes. Mr. Man speaker and Ms. Schwartz voting no.
Okay, voting, seven having voted yes, the resolution is approved. I don't believe there are applications.
No.
So, we will go to item D, which is the St. Patrick's Day Street Party. Mrs. Hiller?
Resolution is to provide on March 15th, the opportunity to have a street party from 8:00 a.m. to March 16th at 2:00 a.m. This is our annual big blowout downtown. The committee would be four, I believe, if you don't read it, Celtic Fox. I'm sorry. Celtic Fox, St. Patrick's Day Party, 8:00 a.m. March 15th to 2:00 a.m. March 16th. Move to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to approve and seconded the St. Patrick's Day Street Party resolution. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no, I vote yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to zoning issues, where we now sit as a, the body to review zoning issues that have come from the planning commission. First one, zoning ordinance, please.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property at 1402 Northwest Lower Silver Lake Road from C2 Commercial District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Fiander to provide information on this and answer any questions.
Mr. Fiander?
Good evening again. Excuse me. The first one before you tonight is a, actually, a relieve a spot zoning condition up in the North Peak area on Northwest Lower Silver Lake Road. The property owners are wishing to convert an existing office building to a residence. The current zoning is C2 Commercial, surrounded by R1 Single Family. In order to do this, they do need to convert to a single-family zoning, fairly straightforward, and so, we do recommend approval as well as the planning commission.
Are there questions for Mr. Fiander? Okay, the, there is a motion to approve, and a second, is there discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
Can you vote?
I have a vote, I'm sorry. I vote yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Item B.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located approximately two miles east of Southwest Topeka Boulevard, and a quarter mile north of Southeast 77th Street, along the east side of Southeast California Avenue, from I1 Light Industrial District to RR1 Residential Reserve District. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so that nobody gets confused by this, the next two items are on the same project, one's an ordinance and one's the resolution, but Mr. Fiander can provide information and answer any questions.
Fiander?
Thank you again. The first ordinance is just the changing of the zoning from, to, from industrial, light industrial to RR1. The project in of itself is a 67-acre tract right at the end of the, south end of the Topeka Regional Airport, and next to Heartland Park. The proposed uses are, there's two proposed uses, one's a soil extraction, and the second one is a demolition landfill. The property owner would extract the soil and store topsoil there for construction sites. It's by appointment only, and the traffic in the area would not be in excess of what is expected. We're looking at about four trucks a day on average during the construction season. The, once that is extracted, they would come back and fill the voids in with construction demolition materials, and then fill that, on top of that, with 18 inches of soil, and return it back to its native state. So, all the stormwater would be handled with, under best management practices on the site, as there is a stream buffer on the site. I mentioned about the traffic not being in excess of what the expectations are for the area, and so, this zoning change helps, allows the demolition landfill. The next one would actually allow the soil extraction.
Are there questions for Mr. Fiander? It is your pleasure. Mrs. Hiller moves to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission. Is there a second? Mr. Campos seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Campos?
I have a question, if I may, Ms. Mayor.
Sure, yes.
How long will it take to fill this hole and to cover it?
It's really dependent on how busy they are. This could take, this could go 10 years, it could go 20 years, it just depends, obviously.
I appreciate that, and I have a problem with having this be right by our airport, something that we just got, and the first thing that you see when you fly into our city is a landfill. I have a landfill in my district, I have quite a few actually, and there's one just down the street off of Ryeth Road near my house. Schmitt &amp; Line does great work in our city, they do clad work, and there's nothing against their company and the quality of work that they provide. My only reservation is when someone's flying into the city of Topeka, what they see, and if you look at that map they provided to us, they will see a landfill upwards to five to 15 years. This is something I can't support, it sets an image, and it's not the right one. We're in the process of rebranding our city, and you don't want a landfill next to a regional airport that just got its first flight in years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other discussion? We have a motion on the ord, for approval of the ordinance. If there is no other discussion, those in favor, please vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have seven yes, and, did you vote yes? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay, we have eight yes and two no.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance, and the recommendation of the planning commission is approved. Item C is a resolution along the same line that I believe gives them permission. Mr. Fiander, if you want to just state that again, they're combined, or they're two different resolutions we need to, or resolutions we, this is a resolution, the first one was an ordinance. I'm sorry, Ms.
Read it first.
Thank you.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, in accordance with section 1865-030 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a conditional use permit to allow for a demolition landfill and the extraction, processing, storage, and sale of topsoil on properties owned RR1 Residential Reserve District, and located approximately two miles east of Southwest Topeka Boulevard, Old US 75 Highway, and a quarter mile north Southeast 77th Street, along the east side of Southeast California Avenue, in the city of Topeka, Kansas.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Fiander to ask, answer any questions that may be present.
To clarify, what you just did was pass the zoning, which allows them to do the demolition landfill. What's before you now is a conditional use permit, or a resolution, that allows the soil extraction on the site.
Thank you. Mrs. Hiller?
A question for you that might help to clarify some of the questions that were out on the last one. It seemed like I read in the materials about this that there was a fair amount of discussion about what to do, and there was a choice between going to I2 in the RR2, the residential reserve, and that there is a problem in that the area is in the flight line, and so, there are, there are a lot of things that can't be done with that land. And so, the choice was to go to continue that business that's already there, and to, but to use the RR2 rather than I2 for future, because it couldn't be developed, and it is, and the I2, even though it may be appropriate for this kind of use right now, is incompatible with the other surrounding uses. So, I really, as- of use right now, is incompatible with the other surrounding uses. So, I really, in a difficult situation, appreciated the thought that went into that. Now, can you flesh that out a little more in terms of what the options are for use of this site?
Councilmember Hiller, you kinda hit the nail on the head here. The owner does not have a lot of options because of the flight incompatibilities. They really can't build anything here. So, actually, a soil extraction where you keep it and you're returning it to its native state, once, and if you look at the conditional use permit, there are a number of conditions to do just that. It is highly regulated by our, by the city, actually, and our stormwater quality practices, to do just that and return it to its natural state. So, as they're taking the soil out, and putting the demolition landfill in, they are covering that back up, and they have to immediately plant on top of that. So, yes, the owner is quite restricted, and actually, for some reason, this site has a special soil that is used very, is in high demand for construction pad sites. So, who knew? That's
Thank you. Are there screening requirements, or is it, is what you're describing such that it doesn't look as bad as maybe what most of us would have in mind?
There's a berm, there's a, on the plans, it shows a, I think it's a five-foot, thereabouts berm that perimeters the property. So, from the outside, no. From the air, you will see some excavation. Eventually, that will be revegetated.
Thank you. And I know, a part of the, from the planning commission, there were five staff recommendations that have to be met
Yes.
If this should be approved for their, for the usage of it.
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Fiander. What protections do we have from, there's a lot of materials and a lot of chemicals used in concrete nowadays to help it solidify, to help it remain its integrity over time and use. What assurances do we have that the material that you're filling this will not sink into underground streams?
Well, two things. There's, there are statements on the conditional use permit plan of what can and cannot go into here. For instance, asbestos is one of those things that cannot. And furthermore, KDHE regulates construction demolition landfills and inspects, and so, that's the assurance, some assurance there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other questions? That is your pleasure. Ms. Schwartz moves approval of the resolution. Mr. Schmidt seconds. Is there discussion? All those in favor of approval of the planning commission recommendation, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have ten yes.
And having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We will go to first readings.
A is an ordinance introduced by councilmember Karen Hiller concerning riding bicycles on sidewalks, amending City of Topeka Code, section ten thirty-five zero ten, and specifically repealing said original section. First reading. B is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson, concerning municipal court procedures for expungement and fingerprinting, amending City of Topeka Code, sections two one ten six sixty, two one ten six seventy, and two one ten six eighty, and specifically repealing said original sections. First reading.
And again, there is no council meeting next week, so those are the first readings for the next council meeting, which will be the first Tuesday in March. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to steal the Batman and Robin, riddle me this. What do Bill Self, Bill Snyder, George Brett, Kathleen Sebelius, and Brendan Wiley all have in common?
They're all most, uh, top twenty-five most influential Kansans.
Yes.
But I thought it was a little Kansas City heavy.
Well, Topeka was well represented. I just wanted to reach out and congratulate Brendan Wiley for being selected as one of the top twenty-five influential people in the state of Kansas. If you really think about the significance of that recognition and the people who were, who are recognized along with them, we have a lot to be proud of, and certainly Brendan, as we all know, has done a phenomenal job and may be the most humble person that any of us have ever met, and so, I think it's a well-deserved, and we all get to bask in a little bit of his glory. So, congratulations, Brendan.
Who is it?
He is not here. He didn't show up.
He's out basking.
He's gone Hollywood on us.
Kevin George Brett are having a beer.
That already
I am concluding.
That is, Mrs. Everhart, Mr. De La Sla, Mr. Man speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, as, I'm certain many Topekins over the past couple of weeks have watched in awe at the legislative branch of our state government, as they've attempted to fix problems, from my perspective, that may or may not exist, and invent ideas that seem less than constitutional. And no disrespect to my colleagues who were former state legislators. I imagine that you are much more even-keeled about your approach. But the shame of this situation, from my perspective, is this. Every move they make has a city attached to it, and that city is Topeka. So, it doesn't matter if it's a state rep from Shawnee who wants to discriminate against people. It doesn't matter if it's a state rep from Wichita who thinks that we should be able to beat our children more severely. The reality is that those things are stains on our community, and I feel, as an elected official in this community, that I have an obligation to speak up for our city. With that being said, given the bill that was put forward last week, twenty-four fifty-three, the quote-unquote Religious Freedom Act, I am planning, in the coming weeks, to bring forward ordinances in the city of Topeka that would establish domestic partnership registry, that would establish same-sex benefits for our city employees, and would also add transgendered individuals, or pardon me, gender identity to our hiring practices. I want to send a clear message to the country, to our citizens, and to Kansans, that Topeka is not a city of hate. We are a community that brought down slavery. We were the backdrop to school desegregation. We are not a city that promotes discrimination. I would also argue we are not a state that promotes discrimination. The shortsightedness of the few in our state have led us down this path, and I, for one, and I hope at least a majority of my colleagues will come along with me, want to send a clear message back that not my city. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think maybe we could be really impactful upon the legislature if we go to City Hall Day, which has been moved to February nineteenth, so I hope to see you all there. I have been contacting my legislators, and one of my concerns when I ran for this office was that the city and the state don't work together enough, and we need to be working together on many different reasons to bring people to Topeka. So, I'm very hopeful that on February nineteenth, which is City Hall Day at the legislature, that we are all there, talking to legislators, and we don't have to just talk to our own elected officials. First off, I want to thank Bill Fiander for the transient guest tax committee he met this last week, and he had met with several people that were very interested in historic tourism in Topeka, and out of that came a solution. And I think we owe that to Bill, that he was very good in working with the stakeholders. The second thing I wanted to say is that, I don't know if any of you attended the garden show this past weekend, but it was phenomenal, and there are so many different venues for Topeka citizens to get involved. We were right next to, I was with the Mean Garden Club, and we were right next to KAB, and I know they're getting ready for another get-down, get-dirty, and so, hopefully, everybody will get involved in that. And then, last night, I mentioned that we were at a meeting to talk about the roadwork that's gonna happen on Thirty-seventh Street to widen it, and I want to commend Doug and his staff, and even Bartlett and West were there, and it was a very, there were over, I counted it, over a hundred and fifty people there at one time, so I know they were coming in. And I think this kind of planning, it went very well, presentation, maps across the boards. I am so pleased that we are bringing this to the public, and they're getting informed on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Harmon, Mrs. Hiller?
Went after the meeting yesterday, or last week, to welcome the Kansas Association of Contractors back downtown. Huge reception, huge ribbon cutting, right across, they're in the, in the first floor of what we all thought of as the U.S. Bank Building for years, right across from the Capitol. It's very, they started out downtown years ago, were gone for a long time, and are coming back, and was lots of buzz about that. It was very heartening to see how their space has been improved and to see them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments made by councilmember Man speaker. It's night and day difference from a year ago. Most definitely, we are Jayhawkers. We are Jayhawkers, and not Jayhawk KU, but Jayhawkers is a defining term for a Kansan, in that we always are pushing the cusp to challenge social trends, forging new ways and forging history in this country, and it always seems to be happening here in Kansas. So, on behalf of the LGBT community, thank you, Mr. Man speaker, for the work that you've done. We appreciate it. We obviously don't have very many activists here in our community. We do not allow for the state representatives, either in the House, or in the Senate, or an eccentric group who considers Topeka their home base, to define who we are, or to define the actions of this body. Topeka in itself means to dig good potatoes, in the KAW language, but we are most definitely a golden city. What does that mean? I don't know, and I'll let you know when I figure it out. But lastly, I would like to invite all constituents and all people of Shawnee County to the Government Review Committee that is taking place this Thursday at the Shawnee County Library at one P.M. It's their first session, and seven P.M. It's absolutely vital that every NIA, NA, home organization, or group in this city and county, come out to demonstrate their support, or lack of support, for the current government that we have, and give their opinions and their life story. I'm only twenty-seven years old. I've never lived under a at-large commission-styled government, and be interesting to hear perspectives from some of the older generations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Ortiz?
Thank you. I'm only twenty-seven years old, too. You know, I was sitting here, I was thinking, Brendan Wiley, where do I know that name? So, that's why it took me a while. So, who is Brendan Wiley? No, I want to give him, congratulate him, but kudos goes out to him. I would just like to call, I'd like for us to go into executive session for twenty minutes. I'd like a motion to do that.
Second.
To include, yes.
Yeah, for what purpose?
To discuss a non-elected official, to include the city manager and counsel, legal counsel.
Second, second. For a period of time of
Twenty minutes.
Did you say twenty minutes?
Yep.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we go into an executive session. I think you heard the purpose for twenty minutes. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. We'll ask people to clear the room, and we will go into executive session when the room is, what, empty, except for us.